Hi, good morning and welcome to the February 12th, 2020 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. Every 10 years, the U.S. Census Bureau surveys our population to ensure that the congressional, state, and local representation is still accurate. Accurate census information, as we all know, is critical to planning for our future growth, development, and social needs of our community. State and federal funding for social and other programs is a critical part of census data as well. And this year, April 1st is Census Day. So as we get closer to that day, expect more information from us either here at commission meetings or on other county platforms. I'd like to also give you some facts about the census. So every year, Kansas receives roughly $6 billion in federal funds because of the census. And if 1% of the state's population is uncounted this year, the state of Kansas could miss out on approximately $603 million in federal funding over the next 10 years. So very critical for our community to be counted. And as I said, more information will be coming as we get closer to Census Day. On a bit lighter note, this Saturday, adults aged 21 and older can learn about love in the animal kingdom at the Sedgwick County Zoo with their event Love Bites. Ticket and event details can be found at their website, scz.org. And lastly, tickets are still available for Exploration Place's annual fundraiser Death by Chocolate. Visit their website, exploration.org, for that information. On the agenda this morning, commissioners, we have an appointment, a resolution amending the District III Citizens Advisory Board. You'll receive a presentation on Interest Bank Arena. Lastly, we have the report of the Board of Bids and Contracts. So Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you.
Thank you, Kate. Good morning, everybody, and welcome everybody in the audience and those watching on KPTS. And so with this, we'll call the order of business for today, February 12th, 2020. We will start with invocation, or you, please.
Invocation, to be led by Pastor Ron Proct from Olivet Baptist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Pray with me, please. Father, we come before you this morning on behalf of our Board of Commissioners. We ask for wisdom, discernment, and courage to make the decisions necessary to provide safety and direction for the citizens who elected them in this very important civic responsibility. Thank you, Father, for their willingness to serve. We pray that they have wisdom as they consider the items presented them for decision today. Give them your perspective on how best to serve the people of our county, even those who politically may disagree with them and who may have opposed their ideas. Give them courage to speak their convictions while honoring those whose convictions might be in conflict. Help them respond to questions from the citizens they represent with honesty and openness. Help the commissioners speak with wisdom and respect as they discuss the items on today's agenda. Give them courage to handle with grace and respect any harsh words directed at them. Give those who speak to this body wisdom to address their concerns with kindness, politeness, and respect, because we're neighbors and we're in this together. Father, we pray for unity even in the diversity of opinions held by the commissioners and those who had addressed them this morning. We pray this morning for those in our community who are the most vulnerable, especially as winter weather has set in. Protect them and protect those who serve them. We ask for your specific presence with our first responders. Thank you for the men and women who go toward the crisis rather than away from it. We pray for protection for them as they provide services to the people in our community. We ask you to teach us how to disagree this morning, Father, without demeaning those who differ with us. Give our leaders locally, statewide, and nationally the courage of their convictions, and at the same time, a gentleness to those who oppose their beliefs. We're grateful for the blessing of living in this great nation and for the community in which we live. We ask for your blessing on those who are in positions of leadership and influence. We ask your special blessing this morning, Father, on Commissioner O'Donnell's family as they deal with the sudden death of his father a week ago. Give them strength and joy as they remember the man who so impacted their lives as well as the lives he touched in our community. These things we ask humbly in your holy name. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. That was a very nice prayer. I appreciate it very much. Okay. Next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. Next item.
Public agenda.
We didn't have anybody sign up. Does anybody from the public still want to address the commission at this point? Being done, next item.
Appointments. Item A, resolution reappointing George Dean to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. You have before you a resolution appointing Mr. Dean, or reappointing Mr. Dean to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. This board deals with, of course, those issues of aging, the aging population, and making recommendations to the board about physical disability issues. It's a 15-member board. Each commissioner gets three appointments. This is Commissioner Dennis's reappointment, and it asks that you adopt the resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate being able to speak on this item. It's my honor to reappoint George Dean to the Aging and Physical Disabilities Advisory Board. He's served honorably for the last several years. This is a reappointment. I know that any citizen that serves on one of our boards goes above and beyond. We sincerely appreciate his support, and I would like to make a motion to reappoint George Dean.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Please take the vote and call the vote. Sorry.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Please, Mr. Dean, thank you. Good morning, and please answer Mr. Arnold for the swearing-in.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. So help me God.
How do you do?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, you have...
Well, I appreciate being reappointed, and I think they do some good work. We have approximately 500,000 seniors in our state, and we need to make sure they're taken care of.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments? Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
New Business. Item B, resolution to amend the composition of the Citizens Advisory Board in the Third District.
Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun again, County Counselor. You have a resolution before you prepared by Justin Wagner in our office which would alter the composition of Commissioner Dennis's Citizens Advisory Board. What this resolution does is amend Section 2 to include, expand this board from 11 to 12 members, and add one high school student whose term each year will expire upon the anticipated time of that person's his or her graduation. So resolution's in proper form, and we'd ask that you approve the resolution.
Okay, yes. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the board hearing my request today. I've mentioned this before, but over the Christmas time, we had a number of different schools come up and sing Christmas carols to the board down in our lobby. And I went down when Goddard Eisenhower High School came to sing, and as I was sitting there, listening to them sing that day, I got thinking that the youth of our nation is something that I'm passionate about. That's why I taught high school for 11 years and was on the State Board of Education. We need to hear from the youth of our world as we make decisions for the board. And so I think that a good policy, for me at least, on my district advisory board, Citizens' Advisory Board, would have a student representative on that board. So I have asked our legal to draft this resolution to allow me to increase the size of my board by one person so that I can add a student as a full member of the Citizens' Advisory Board for District 3. So I hope that I get support from the rest of the commissioners on this. I've already identified the individual. Probably the next meeting, we'll be on our agenda one or more item to appoint this individual. But before that we can officially do that, we need to have the authority to do it. So I make a motion that we amend the composition of the Citizens Advisory Board for the Third District so we can add one more person.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, and I personally agree with your motion and your movement towards this. It's good for our youth to be involved. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, go next row. Next item.
Item C, presentation of the Interest Bank Arena report.
Please state your name and your position.
Absolutely, because I'm so unfamiliar to you all. Good morning, commissioners. Lindsay Porgeso, your CFO, and this morning also your contract administrator with ASM Global for the operations of your Interest Bank Arena. So before we get into it, I want to take a moment just to say thank you, as always. I know A.J. Beleski will be joining us. I think he had a meeting this morning, and so I'll talk slowly. So hopefully, he will walk in here shortly. If not, I will be happy to talk about all the amazing things they do and what we have to look forward to. But certainly, I want to say thank you to him and his team in particular, Chris Whitney, who is the Assistant General Manager there, and the Finance Director, and Ben Ficus, who's their Accounting Manager, who do a lot of hard work to make sure that these financials look good and are accurate and correct and all of that. And then also, I want to say thank you to Kyle Fiedler, who is a management intern in the manager's office, at least for the rest of this week. And then he will be joining us in finance in the Economic Development Analyst role next week. So we'll be excited to join, or to have him join us. And then also, my thanks to Jessica Osmeier in our office. Both of those folks work very hard to make sure this report is good. So it was an excellent year for the arena. I don't know if you all know this, but actually, 2019 was the third-best year in the history of the arena. And that is notable to me particularly because it wasn't the opening year, and it wasn't a particularly significant anniversary year either, which is where we have seen the two other highest numbers. So certainly, kudos to them for that work. And also, already, just to toot the horn a little bit for ASM Global and the work they've done, already in 2020, they've had an amazing kickoff to this 10-year anniversary year. And so a few weeks ago, A.J. had sent me a really cool picture of the facility during the George Strait concert. And so during the course of those emails back and forth, he was telling me how proud he was of his team. And I thought this information was pretty cool, because we don't always hear about this in our way of doing work. But they had six straight days of figure skating, WWE Monday Night Raw, which was on the USA Network. Then they had the ECHL All-Star Game, which was on the NHL Network, and then George Strait, all in a very short amount of time. And so you just think about trying to host one event, but you think of all of those in one. That's certainly an amazing thing that that team over there does. So our kudos to them also. And of course, there's a lot to look forward to. I know A.J.'s going to come up and tell you all about that. I know some of you up there might be excited for Cher. I know some of the audience might be excited for Kiss. I am super pumped for Backstreet Boys in August.
(Singing) Backstreet, back, alright.
That's right. And A.J. does some great sound effects. You'll have to ask him if he comes up to the podium. Maybe he can do that for you. I got to hear those Monday at our financial review meeting. So your signs will be perfect then. So with that, we will get into the actual performance for the Interest Bank Arena for 2019. So periodically, we do come and give you a routine update. So we are going to talk about the second half of 2019 and also compare that with the annual performance. You'll see throughout this presentation, which you all should have copies of at your seats, that we now refer to the entity that operates our facility as ASM Global. SMG is the formal contracting name, but ASM Global is the actual operating name. And so you will see that throughout. That is who we will now reference when we used to talk about SMG. So we'll talk about the management. We'll talk about the financials. We'll give a very brief update on the City of Wichita Arena parking status. We'll look at the status of the sales tax reserves, which of course are a hot-button issue. And then A.J. will come up and tell you all about what we have to look forward to and the many ways that ASM Global is interactive or interacts with our community. So I'm going to skip this slide in substance, because we just talked about the management agreement in December, and so I think this is probably all fresh in your minds. We do have agreement for ASM Global to operate and promote the facility, and they've done a good job. And you'll get to see the actual details of that here momentarily. So we're going to cover ticket sales. We're going to look at the community affairs, so the way community groups maybe have been involved in that facility this year. And then also, we'll look at the financials, so the operating performance. And just a reminder that this focuses on the arena itself. The financials associated with the building depreciation and all of that can be found in our county's annual financial report that'll come out this April. So looking at ticket sales through the second half of 2019, there were 33 total performances in that time, with attendance of about 137,000, tickets sold of about 135,000, gross ticket sales approaching 6.3 million, with an average cost per ticket sold of about $47. When we compare that, though, to the entire year, you'll see that certainly that first part of the year was especially hot. So overall, there were 87 performances in the facility in 2019, attendance of about 350,000, tickets sold of about 330,000. You can see gross ticket sales were in excess of 13.3 million, and the average cost per ticket sold was $40.60. And again, this information reflects the third-highest performing year for the arena. So looking at community affairs, so with all of those events, of course, ASM Global has historically allowed community groups to come in and volunteer at the concession stands and earn some money off of that. And so for the second half of 2019, there were 110 total groups that volunteered that earned about $100,000. You can see that spending with Sedgwick County and Kansas companies was in excess of 1.1 million. Sales taxes paid to the state for those purchases were about 680,000. There were nine arena presentations and tours and 12 local events and activities. And certainly, I know the organizational management team here at the county was excited to have a brown bag there at that facility in December. So how does that look, though, for the entire year? So there were 220 total groups that worked in those concession stands, earning about $245,000 throughout the course of 2019. There was total spending with Sedgwick County, Kansas companies of about $3 million and sales taxes paid of about 1.5 million. And you can see the number of tours and local events and activities. So then we'll shift to the financials. And so because it is in the end of the year, we'll talk a little bit, as we get to the second slide in this, about this bottom term, net building income. That's really the bottom line. You'll see the other terms listed here on the sheet as we get into the slides, and I would just refer you back to this definition if you want to know specifically what's included. And if you have questions, I'll be more than happy to try and address those or ask A.J. to help. So for the second half of the year, you can see that of those 33 performances, there was a total income of about 1.975 million. Then there was other operating income, gross building income, and then we deduct out the indirect expenses associated with running the facility, and that brought us to a total net building income for the facility for the second half of 2019 of about $307,000. But again, as we talked about, the first half of the year was really strong. And so when we look at the total events for the year, you'll see again the 87 performances, and then you'll see a total net building income in excess of $1 million. And so you may recall that the net profit sharing agreement that we have with the arena calls for ASM Global to receive the first $400,000 of net building income, and then the rest is split 50-50, Sedgwick County with ASM Global. And so what this means is that the audit is ongoing now for arena financials. So we'll have a final official number here within the next month or so. But at this point, we're anticipating about $311,000 of operating income to come back into that sales tax reserve. And then, of course, with 2020, we began also the facility fee addition that will bolster those figures as well. So then, let's look at the status of the arena sales tax reserve. If you recall, these are the authorized uses for that reserve. We have major repairs and capital equipment. As you'll see as we move through this, that is the bulk of the dollars that are expended out of this reserve, up to 225,000 annually to reimburse the city for expenses if those expenses aren't covered through revenues. So far, we have not ever had to make a payment to the city associated with that. And then finally, the parking operations of what we affectionately call the Coleman Lot. If we needed to do repair work there, that could come from this reserve. So this shows the status throughout the course of the year of that sales tax reserve. And kind of where the rubber meets the road, you can see that we stand at $7.4 million in that reserve fund at the end of 2019. So this slide shows the detailed revenues. This information, of course, is summarized in our quarterly financial and monthly financial reports that you receive, but this is a little more itemized detail. So that first line, for example, the 2018 CIP refund, each year, we award an amount to ASM Global to do the CIP projects. If those funds aren't spent, those dollars are returned back to the reserve. So that is that amount. You can see the net income from 2018, that $123,817 from that net operating income, the profit-sharing agreement we have. And then you can see the naming right installments from our partners at that facility. So in total, you can see there was $723,000 of revenue into that fund in 2019. But then we look at expenditures. And so commissioners, if you recall during our management agreement discussions, we talked about making some changes to the way we do the CIP process internally, not necessarily through the management agreement, but we promised you a revised policy that would kind of shift around the authority of the contract administrator to be the sole person who makes the call on the CIP. And so we've also promised to provide more information. So at your seats, you'll see two additional sets of information, and we have them, we have copies available here too. But what that shows are the projects, the dollars associated with the projects, and the summary of the project. It emulates the county's CIP. And so you'll see one dated October 1, 2018. That includes the 2019 projects that were funded and included in this list here. And then you'll also see one that's dated October 1, 2019. That includes the revised figure that will be paid out for 2020. And as we give you periodic updates through 2020, we'll talk about those as well. But you can see on this list that 2019, or I'm sorry, on this slide, you can see the 2019 CIP was a little bit more than 1.3 million. You'll see on this next slide that there were also some emergency repairs and things that were done that we would also qualify as CIP. And so those would not have been included on that list again because they were emergency. They weren't anticipated. And so as we move forward, we'll make sure to call your attention to these projects. You'll see there's escalator gas, glass, excuse me, safety rails, chiller repairs, and then a heating water pump repair. And so you'll see that in total, we spent just about $2 million out of that fund for CIP, for emergency repairs, and for license fees, ticket allowances, and other things that are allowed under the naming rights and sponsorship agreements we have with all the folks who work with us there at the Interest Bank Arena. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that, or I'm happy to ask A.J. to help me answer some of those questions if you have any. If not, I'll shift over to A.J. and let him take over the next part.
We have one question. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Lindsay, and thank you, A.J., for being here today. I just, my questions mainly are around how you pick vendors to provide services to your facility? Do they have to go through the same sort of process that we have to go through as far as bidding it out? And also, who designed your website and how was that selected?
Good morning, commissioners. A.J. Beleski with ASM Global and Interest Bank Arena. So we do an RFP process for all of our bids for the CIP projects, and we require at least three bids to come in, and then we award based on that. The question that you asked about the website, Howerton &amp; White, we've used for the last few years. We went out to RFP on that project as well initially on the website. They've done the website for us twice now. And so competitive bid process on all of those projects, including the website, which just rolled out for our 10-year anniversary in January.
So we have our, you know, we have our lowest bid requirement. Is that something that you guys have to do, too?
Well, ours are requests for proposals, so we can base it based on the needs of the proposal. We obviously are looking for the lowest bid, but if that bid doesn't necessarily meet our specifications, then we would go with a higher bid.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is probably for Lindsay and Mr. Papun. If you recall, as we went back and we were working on the contract for SMG, one of the concerns we've had all along is this drawdown in the sales tax reserve. And eventually, this drawdown is going to get down to the point where it's going to start coming out of our general fund. And one thing I had never thought of before, but I read the newspaper today and saw the City of Wichita is adding a tax on everything on the West Bank to start helping paying for that, and it's just for that certain area. And then I see how much our ticket sales are. Are we able to put on like a half a cent sales tax or a one cent sales tax on everything that's sold in that arena area and then use that to help keep our fund alive, our sales tax fund alive, so that we're not getting to the point where it starts coming out of the general fund?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Papun on the legality of that. You're welcome.
Commissioner, I'm unaware. I think the kind of situation you're talking about is probably a TIF district sort of thing, and it may already be in a city TIF district from down there, in conjunction with Old Town.
You mean, he's referring to a CID district, not a TIF district. It is in a TIF district, but Commissioner Dennis is talking about...
We're going to have, I'm just going to have to look into that, whether we could do that. Of course, the original sales tax for the arena was cut off at 30 months. And so I...
But that was a countywide sales tax. What I'm talking about is just a sales tax in the arena. And that's exactly what the City of Wichita is doing all the time, to help finance their different projects. And I'm trying to figure out a way that we can keep this off the general fund.
We'll certainly look into that, Commissioner Dennis.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's an interesting idea you hadn't thought of. In fact, just to make a point here, we paid, if I understand correctly, on Slide 7, 1.7, sorry, $1.4 million in sales tax to the state?
ASM Global did, yes.
Okay. So talking about, you know, adjusting that number for covering the shortfall potentially at the arena in the future sales tax fund, or sales tax reserve fund. Just want to make sure, on Slide 13, so the ONM reserve at the end of 19 is $7.3 million. And the CIP list that you handed out, that's the most current in October 2019, for going forward, is a little more than $4 million. So if I do the, if they execute all those project plans, we're going to be down around $3.5 million or so, maybe, a little, between $3 and $3.5 million. $3.5 million or so, maybe, a little, between $3 and $3.5 million in the reserve fund after that CIP is completed. Is that correct?
That's correct. Then we would want to add in that operating income.
Right, so we don't know what that would be. Could be positive or maybe not, but so I'm saying somewhere between $3 and $3.5 would be reasonable to expect that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's, just to make a point, that's less than half what we have right now. So we're spending about half of our reserve, actually more than a half of our reserve in the 2019 CIP, 2020 CIP plan.
That's true. I think one thing, though, that has made that a little more palatable, I think through the course of the discussion, is the fact that ASM Global now has dedicated that $1.50 of each ticket, the facility fee, specifically to be earmarked for CIP use. And so we're already talking in finance, we'll get that first collection at the beginning of 2021, and we will figure out specifically how to allocate those dollars and make sure that they are only spent on CIP to try and extend the life of that CIP fund.
Back to Commissioner Dennis's point a minute ago, we just signed a contract or approved a contract, I think last month, a month and a half ago, I believe, for the $300,000 of general fund dollars from Sedgwick County each year going forward. Is that correct?
It would be a match, and we anticipate that it could be up to $300,000.
If we contemplated the sales tax idea, is that something that can be, you know, I guess I'll ask Mr. Papoun to look into that, whether or not that's something that could be reconsidered. I would rather see sales tax funds out of the arena, support that rather than general fund property taxes from the county.
Yes, Commissioner, we'll be happy to look into that. But I will say that, and I was involved in this from the very beginning and had conversations with our former CIA, or former Lindsey, losing my mind this morning, but Chris Cronis. I don't think that reserve fund was ever intended to last forever. I mean, it was originally going 26, 28, or something like that, but we'll certainly look at other ways to.
With due respect, I understand that completely. I just think the people who voted for the arena did not necessarily understand that there would be future property tax funds supporting the arena. That was something, something I don't remember ever being discussed when that vote happened. And it's not that it's not, you know, a reality that maybe some of us may have known at the time, but I think that the general public has had a little awareness of that truth. And so, again, and we even have discussions about the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan. I think there's gonna be a sales tax, probably money to do that. I think there ought to be a knowledge that if that was to ever happen, and when that sales tax sunsets, there's probably gonna be a need for property tax funds to continue to maintain those facilities or some other plan. So it's a really good point, and I'm glad this is coming up today. I have one other question. Can you please explain a little bit more about the parking relationship between us and the city of Wichita? You said we have not made a payment, but how does that work? So people go down and use those parking lots, they pay for those spaces, and the revenue goes to the city. Can you please explain that a little bit more detail, please?
Absolutely. So we have an agreement with the city, and I thought I had the contract with me, but I'll be happy to share it with you. And basically, what that contract says, it's between the county and the city, is that if there is a point where the city is not making enough to cover the operations, then the county could, again, up to that $225,000, need to dip into that. And I believe, AJ, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, any discussions you've had with the city, but we have not had any other, we've never had an ask to reimburse.
Is that a contract that we renew once in a while, do you know? Or is that something that's kind of in perpetuity? How is that?
I'll have to look at the details. We have not renewed it since I have been in this role since December of 16.
Someone from the city called into question this Intertrust Bank Arena parking lots when they were talking about other parking around the city building, the Reagan building, and other things. And so I think it's a relevant discussion. We ought to have a comprehensive understanding about our parking relationship with the city of Wichita with these various buildings. I don't think we have a good understanding, at least I don't. I could certainly understand more about that, so I appreciate the opportunity to understand that more deeply. That's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other questions. Ready to move on.
Good morning again. So we wanted to talk a little bit about our community service projects and then our upcoming events as well. So you'll see on the first slide, you know, there's a lot of these that have become annual, we like to call them annual traditions because we look forward to them so much. We tend to focus on a lot of these events in the summer, fall, when we're a little slower, rather than this time of the year when we're busier with events. But you'll see in July, we did Lake Appton Sheriff's Camp for Kids. This is, we make breakfast burritos for all the kids that attend the camp. We've done this a couple of years now and love that event. Also, moving on to the next page, you'll see Ronald McDonald House, again, another annual volunteer service for us. This year, they have a new house on 550 Hillside, I believe, that we went to and helped them volunteer. They were just moving in, so it was kind of neat to be part of that project. We have developed a really good relationship, so Savor is the food and beverage provider within our company, ASM Global. They've created a really good relationship with ICT Food Rescue, and so we have donated several times food, whether it's from a concert or catering, those kinds of things, worked with them to provide food there. That's turned into a really good thing. Obviously, participated in the Zuba Lee this year as well, with Savor having a booth. Lots of ticket donations as normal. I think last time we added that up, it was somewhere in the $70,000 a year worth of ticket donations that go to local nonprofit organizations. Also donated food and beverage to the Kansas Humane Society. There's numerous in here. And then as we get to the end of the year, Kansas Food Bank is another one that we do every November, December. And then the Salvation Army Tree. We also did the Our United Way campaign fell on this time period as well. We donate, it's about $6,000, our contribution from all of our employees. I think we have about 52% participation, so we're pretty happy with that number. It's gone up over the years, and we'll continue to pursue that with our team. But you will see pages and pages of community service, so there's a lot there. We're proud of it. We're proud to be part of the community. We want to continue to do it and always open to new ideas. If there's something you think that we're missing, we have a committee that just focuses on our community involvement, and we'd love to send that their way if you have some areas. Marquee usage, we continue to use, and we donate that first come, first served basis, and each nonprofit that signs up gets one month of free marquee usage at the arena during all of our events that happened during that month. So lots going on there. Upcoming events, Lindsey talked about some of these. Our 10-year anniversary concert series, we continue to pursue this year. We started with Guns N' Roses back in October. Most recently, George Strait, Straight to Oz, here in January with Visit Wichita, being a presenting sponsor of that event. Sold-out event, very successful, more than 14,000 people in the building that night, just a really good event. And coming up, a busy weekend and week ahead of us. Jason Aldean will be here on Friday night again. That's a 10-year anniversary concert. And then Korn and Breaking Benjamin on Sunday, and then Kiss is back on Wednesday, the 19th, with another concert series show. Moving on down, Blake Shelton will be here in March. We're also very excited about the bare knuckle fighting championship, so this is the first one of this particular event that we've hosted in the arena. This is gonna feature Wichita's very own, Nico Hernandez, and also Dave the Caveman Rickles. It'll be streamed, I believe, nationally, worldwide. But it's an up-and-coming fighting event that's taken off nationally. This is the first event, it was just recently approved in Kansas, and this will be the first event in Kansas. So we're pretty excited to be hosting.
Is Nico fighting in that?
He is.
Yeah.
Without gloves.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so it's bare knuckle fighting.
Awesome or scary or wow? Okay, yeah.
I know he's said publicly, he's very excited, it's always been a goal of his, to play in Wichita. And I think so far, or I'm sorry, fight. I'm used to playing, I'm used to shows playing. So to fight in Wichita, and so he's crossing one off his bucket list, and so are we, because we've wanted to host him as well, so we're excited.
Thank you for putting that together. I know you've put some effort into that, so that's really good.
Been working with the state boxing commission on that, too?
We did. Actually, they kind of introduced us to this company.
Very good.
So it's been a good relationship. We've worked with them on a lot of our events, everything from WWE to UFC last year. So yeah, it's been a good, a good run. And then moving on into April, we have Cher that we mentioned earlier, which is selling very well, and we expect a near-full house for that event when it happens in April. And then Dude Perfect, Impractical Jokers, Alabama with the Beach Boys later in the summer. So we're excited about some of these. And then, as Lindsey mentioned, the Backstreet Boys in August. That's my sound. So she put me on the spot, I know I had to do it, so that's as good as it gets. But anyways, we're excited for all those and have some more announcements coming up very soon for the rest of the year, so.
Okay, two words. Maggie Rogers.
You always have words for us, and we love it.
Maggie Rogers.
She's on the list.
Okay.
As is the Eagles from last time, I think.
Oh, yeah. Well, we won't forget about them, but Maggie Rogers.
We'll keep that list going. So as mentioned earlier, it was a very successful year, the top-three year for us. We're very happy, proud of our staff, our team. They put in a ton of hours. We work, obviously, during the week, but also we work when people want to go out and have fun. So that's nights and weekends and all that, so there's a lot of time. Majority of our staff probably spends more time there than they do with their families. And so kudos to our team for pulling off a great year. And now we're going into our 10-year anniversary year. And then on the horizon, in '21, men's NCAA tournament will be back, and then women's in '22 with the NCAA regional. So some exciting years ahead of us.
Thanks, AJ. When is the Beastie Boys?
You know, I would love it if it was the Beastie Boys, but it's actually the Backstreet Boys. It's August 21st.
One of those boys.
Goes on sale on Valentine's Day.
Pete was the second caller on Steven Ted yesterday. He barely missed them to get.
Yes, I tried to get tickets, but I failed. So thank you for pointing that out.
You were one caller.
I know, I was. Okay.
All right.
Thanks, AJ. Congratulations to your staff, too, as well.
Thank you.
They're very professional, so very good.
Okay. Lindsey, you're up again, or not? Is that the end of the report?
I recommend you receive and file.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Any other comments? And thank you for the questions, fellow commissioners, during this. So being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item D, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on February 6, 2020.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The Board of Bids and Contracts meeting at February 6, we have four items that we'd like to present to you and ask for your approval on. The first item is the 2020 Crack Seal for Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Pavement Pros LLC in the amount of Item number two is for medical and first aid supplies, various county departments. This recommendation is to utilize the Fairfax County, Virginia contract ending in the number 9563, that's with Bound Tree Medical LLC. And this is to establish the contract pricing per the agreement through December 26, 2020, and it has four one-year options to renew thereafter. Item number three is paper stock for various departments. This recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from Timber Creek Paper Incorporated and establish the contract rates as listed above. And our fourth item is community e-waste collection event for environmental resources. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Dynamic Life Cycle Innovations Incorporated with a cost of $151,500 and a collection rate of 24 cents per pound, and that's for the duration of the event. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of the items.
Are there any questions? Yes. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't have any questions. I just have a comment about the environmental resources waste collection event. I am impressed with this operation. I am happy to know that we are taking our environment seriously. I know that I have a couple of computers at my house that I have no clue what to do with because I don't know how to remove any information from my hard drive. I will be the first to admit that. And I just, I think it's very responsible of us as a community, as a county, to offer this opportunity to folks. The numbers that I received yesterday were incredible about the number of people who participated in this event, and I'm excited at the fact that we're going to be doing it again. I think it's late March, early April this coming year, so that's pretty exciting, and I would encourage people to take advantage of it and to do some spring cleaning of your electronic devices. So hopefully, we can approve this item.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation this morning on the e-waste event. I am curious, have we researched where this stuff actually ends up? I say they recycle it, but how do they do that? Do they, sometimes we think it's got recycled, but they end up in a landfill somewhere. So what's the process to recycle these things?
Cindy Lee Environmental Resources. So this company is a zero-waste company. That means everything will get recycled 100%, nothing's going overseas. They will take everything apart, and everything is at a lockdown facility, it's going back to Wisconsin, they're taking apart there. And then from then on, they'll kind of recycle it to different vendors.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell. Joe, I have one question. I'm intrigued, and I'm trying to read quickly the question answers, but on the, so we're exercising a contract, this is number two, on the Fairfax count, we're able to piggyback on a Fairfax County, Virginia contract?
Yes, sir. We have.
How'd you find that?
Well, we, there's various sources, there are different cooperative, like consolidators, and they give a list of all the different types of cooperative purchases that you can piggyback off of. And so I credit our buyers for doing a great job in researching and finding those. Once they find them, they make sure they've been competitively solicited, and they get the results, they review that, and it's a very nice process, very thorough.
Right. So is this a continuation of the service we have today with same company?
Yes, sir. This is a continued, we had this company before, and EMS gave it very high marks. They place an order that morning, and they get it the next day out of the Dallas warehouse. So they've got nice service, good prices.
Well, my compliments to the staff and the research to recognize those opportunities. I assume the, piggyback, the cost is good.
Very competitive, yes, sir.
Okay. With that, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve bids and contracts.
A second. Been a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Morning. Chairman and Commissioners, Tom Stills with the manager's office, recommend approval of items E through K this morning.
Okay, thank you, Tom. There's a motion to, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items E through K?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next up.
Legislative issues.
Mr. Papoun?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think today's legislative issue is going to be dramatically shorter than last week.
Thank you.
Two of our bills, our nuisance abatement bill and our Sedgwick County Charter Commission priorities, both priorities for the county have been introduced, I think were introduced on Monday in the Ways and Means Committee. The charter commission legislation has been assigned a bill number, it's Senate Bill 406. For some reason, and our lobbyist was going to check into it, the nuisance abatement bill has not been given a bill number yet. It's my understanding that Senator McGinn is going to work both of these bills in the Ways and Means Committee to help expedite them along, so hopefully, we can get moving on that. Regarding House Bill 2512, the election bill to allow us to vote anywhere, we had a lot of discussion on that last week, and I know there was a hearing, and I'm sure perhaps Commissioner Howell can expand on that later. Same with Senate Bill 294, which is the bill that would freeze the tax rates from municipalities. We didn't take a official stand on that bill at last Wednesday's meeting. I listened to some of the testimony on that. There were a number of opponents from local government, including the league and the Association of Counties, testified in opposition to that bill. But so far, I haven't heard of any other movement regarding this bill. I know that Commissioner Howell has worked with our department on House Bill 2547, which is another bill involving suspended driver's licenses. I'm sure he will want to comment on that. This actually is the bill that was proposed by our district attorney, Mark Bennett, and his working group to deal with this issue. And I might bring to your attention, our lobbyist, Jason Watkins, brought to my attention late yesterday that there's a bill that's been filed, Senate Bill 396, which you're probably going to be hearing from the city of Wichita and other cities about. This is a bill that would essentially require that all countywide sales tax monies be given solely to the county, and the cities would only receive that which there was an interlocal agreement between the county and the city regarding their share of the taxes.
Well, that's interesting.
And I'm sure we'll be hearing from people about that bill. Doesn't particularly hurt the county in any way. I guarantee you that. And then, this morning, I was just talking with Commissioner Dennis about House Bill 2528, which I believe he'll expand upon, which is in the House Transportation Committee tomorrow, which has to do with antique vehicles. And that's the only information I have at this time, but we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Well, thanks for the report. Sounds like fairly positive news on nuisance and charter commission, just the fact that it's got a number?
Well, it's positive from, like I said, it'll be interesting to see why we didn't get a bill number yet on the nuisance abatement bill, and we'll check into that.
Right.
And that's certainly a bill we're going to want once we find out about the hearing, commissioner involvement and presence at that hearing, probably to have a chance of pushing that along. I will say that Chris Labram, I think saw him earlier, was very helpful in getting us a nice packet of information to show some of the nuisance properties that we have in the county, and we gave that to our lobbyist earlier this week. So, he has them to pass out to committee members. So, we got that going for us. But so far, we should have it later in the day, but so far, we don't have a bill number on that particular bill. But it's encouraging regarding the charter commission, which, of course, would be the less controversial of those two.
Right. Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. I appreciate Mr. Papoun mentioning House Bill 2528. A lot of you may not know who Josh Blick is, but he's the gentleman that runs automobilia. So, if you've ever been to automobilia, you know who Josh Blick is. Last night, I saw him on Channel 3, and he was talking about House Bill 2528. And this deals with what defines an antique car. Now, it's near and dear to my heart because I own several of them. But what's happening right now is that if the, an officer pulls someone over that's driving a vehicle with an antique tag on it, and it's not 100% original, and by that, I mean even down to the tires and wheels, they can impound the tag, they can impound the vehicle, they can ticket the drivers and revoke their driving privileges, they can cancel their insurance on the car, and they can require the vehicle to be re-titled and cost additional funds. And this gets a little bit ridiculous. And I'll give you a couple of examples on my own personal cars. I have a '62, and I have different, I have radial tires because they're better to drive on than an old Biosply tire. I could be pulled over and ticketed, and all those things could happen because I'm driving that 1962 car with radial tires. My son has a '71, and it has air conditioning in it. If you've ever done any air conditioning work at all, you know that refrigerant that was in air conditioning back in 1971 used Freon R12. You can't buy Freon R12 today. It's prohibited. So, we changed out the compressor and put R134 in it. That other compressor, that's no longer an antique vehicle by the way the current law is written. House Bill 2528, all it does is it changes one line in the statute that says any vehicle that's 35 years or older is an antique vehicle. And that eliminates all this officer discretion on any officer that pulls somebody over that's driving a car with an antique tag, because it's truly an officer's discretion on whether or not that they want to do that. But, and I'm certain that all of officers here in Sedgwick County have a little bit better discretion than to ticket someone because they put radial tires on their car. But it doesn't mean that this is not a problem throughout the state. So, I'm going to submit a written testimony on 2528. We're working on it right now. It is being held, the hearing's being held tomorrow. I strongly support House Bill 2528. I don't know if anyone else, because I don't think any of the other commissioners here relate to it by personally owning a vehicle like that, but I'm sure that we all go to car shows, and we love looking at these cars that are modified a little bit, but they are still antique. So, it's your discretion on whether you want to join me, but I do plan on sending written testimony out. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Commissioner Dennis, feel free to add me to that. Josh Blick is my appointee for the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. He has called me on that in the past, and yes, I don't have a direct tie, but I know we all represent people that have antique cars all across the county. So, I'd be happy to support that. Thank you.
And so, remind me, so this was just introduced recently, yesterday or something?
I don't know when it was introduced. I just saw it on the news last night.
On the news yesterday.
But it's being heard tomorrow, so we're going to need to get testimony in. If I'd had three, we could say it's a commission position.
And you're in opposition to the new bill?
No, I'm in favor of the new bill because all it does is changes one line in the statute that says any vehicle that's 35 years or older. Right now, the way the statute's written is what I'm opposed to.
Okay. Well, I would join in supporting you on that. If we need to have a motion, can we, Mr. Papoun, how can we?
I think you could go ahead and have a motion to have the county support, be a proponent of House Bill 2547, if you want. Or we could just take your discussion this morning and use that as an understanding that the majority of commissioners support, however you'd want to do it, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Howell? Commissioner Howell, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I'm conflicted. First of all, I understand the point, and Josh Blick is also a friend of mine, and I want him to be successful. I understand this thing is going to be, without some clarification in the law, this is certainly going to be difficult to many people who do own antique vehicles. And so, I want to show them support, and I appreciate this coming before us today. Me personally, I do agree with the comments of Commissioner Dennis. I would argue this is not a commission issue. I was reading through all the bills today. There are, I would say roughly 50 bills that are having hearings today and tomorrow, and next week is turnaround. And they plan on being on the floor, I believe, all day, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday next week, hopefully trying to wrap up before the end of next week. And so, we need to focus as a commission on the things that really matter to our constituents in terms of county issues. Again, it's not that I don't agree with what you're trying to do personally. I sometimes testify as a person on issues that I care deeply about. So far this year, I've testified on scrap metal, suspended drivers, votings, I'm sorry, the right to vote, the vote centers issue. And I didn't have a commission support on those things as I went forward. I think those are very much commission issues. So, it's not that I don't agree that this is an issue for some people in our community, but I'm telling you, those 50 bills that are going to be having hearings today, most of them, if not all of them, in fact, impact people here in Sedgwick County. So, it's not that we can't just say, you know, this particular one, we're going to testify as a commission on this one. I think that we ought to testify on all bills if that was the case, but we don't do that. So, I guess I would be opposed to any formal action from the commission because I think it waters down our political collateral, if you will. We have to be very careful how we spend our political collateral, and I don't want to water that down by doing things that really are not commission issues. And so, I agree with the sentiment of Commissioner Dennis, and I appreciate him wanting to support this personally. I don't know if this ought to be a commission issue. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. And I don't have a problem with this not being a commission issue, but if any of the other commissioners would like to join me on my letter of written testimony, I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Last piece is House Bill 2590. It's the data sharing bill regarding the Department of Children and Families and local law enforcement. We had talked about this last summer with some of the more high-profile tragic cases where law enforcement, whether it was the PD or the Sheriff's Department, wasn't aware children were in the home when there were domestic violence calls or other types of disturbance calls. DCF has still been unwilling to cooperate at the amount that I believe law enforcement across the state would want. So, this might be something that we want to look into to see if we want to weigh in or ask the sheriff and the district attorney what they want. But there were two very high-profile cases, the Brewer case and the Jovanovic case, which preceded the current administration. However, there hasn't seemed to be a lot of movement. So, I know that that's going on this week. So, it's something we need to probably talk to our law enforcement about, and including the city of Wichita. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can you follow up on that, Mike, with her?
We'll be happy to look at that bill and talk.
You got the right number?
2590.
Yeah, I've got it written down, and we'll talk to the district attorney and sheriff about that bill.
Okay. Well, we didn't have a motion, but I will be glad to co-sign with your letter as well. Add money.
Appreciate that.
Okay. All right. Next item, unless we have any other comments. We don't, so.
Other?
Next item, please. Yes? Other. Is there any other information or other under that? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank everyone for the outgoing support to our family. I think most, I think a lot of people in this room actually were at the funeral services or at least the viewing. It was remarkable. Thank you for the flowers and just the encouragement. So, our family is, we are doing very well. So, thank you all.
Good. Well, we hope. The recovery time is not easy on that, so, good luck. Every day hopefully gets better. Okay. Any other comments? None at this time, so, next item, please.
Executive session.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 10 minutes until 10:15 for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel relating to the employment of a management-level county employee, and that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 10:15.
Okay. We're adjourned until 10:15. Motion in a second. Sorry.
A second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. We'll meet in the back.
The Wichita Cedric County Law Enforcement Training Center is a combined facility with personnel from the Wichita Police Department and the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. The training center requires all applicants seeking the position of police officer, deputy sheriff, or detention deputy to pass a series of physical agility tests. The tests are designed to evaluate the physical fitness, the physical agility, and the strength of the applicant. Here is what you can expect and what you will need to do to pass the physical agility tests. All applicants should wear clothes they can move in and be comfortable in. Athletic clothing, like a t-shirt and shorts or sweatpants, is a good example of proper clothing to wear for the physical agility tests. Also, wear athletic shoes with good traction. Sandals are not allowed. The first physical agility test is push-ups. You will do as many as you can in one minute. Here is what a proper push-up looks like. Your feet should be no more than shoulder width apart, hands in line with your shoulders, and hip and torso in a straight position. You will be required to go all the way down within inches of the mat or until the elbows are at 90 degrees, and then back up. Be sure to maintain a tempo during the test so each push-up is done correctly and counted. The second physical agility test is sit-ups. Once again, you will be asked to perform the maximum number of sit-ups in one minute. Here is what a proper sit-up looks like. Notice that your knees are slightly bent, your feet are flat on the ground, and arms crossed over the chest. You will then lift your upper body from the mat until you are at or near a 90-degree angle or when the elbows are on the knees, then back down. Only proper sit-ups will be counted. The third physical agility test is called the Illinois Agility Run. This is a timed course that assesses an applicant's speed and agility. You will begin the test on your stomach with your fingertips behind the starting point and feet together. On the start command, you will get to your feet as quickly as possible and sprint to the top of the course and touch the line with one foot. You will then sprint back down to the bottom end of the course at the starting area. You will then weave through a series of cones to the top end, then weave back. After completing the weave, you will sprint to the line at the top of the course, touching the line with your foot, then sprint back down to the bottom of the course and finish line. Time will stop after you cross the finish line. You must finish the course without knocking over any cones. The final physical agility test administered is called the multi-stage run or the beep test. The purpose of this test is to measure cardiovascular fitness and maximum oxygen uptake or the VO2 max. You will start on a designated line and be required to run a distance of 20 meters to another line marked at the other end. An audible signal, or beep, will tell you when to run each time. As the test progresses through a series of levels, the time between the beeps will become shorter. You will continue to run from one end to the other until you are unable to keep up with the pace of the test. The monitor of the test will signal a warning if you fail to reach the line in time. You will have to stop if you fail to reach the line on two consecutive attempts. The monitor will announce the level in which you reached before stopping. Please remember the level you reached so it can be recorded later. In order to pass the physical agility test required by the Wichita Cedric County Law Enforcement Training Center, the applicant must complete each test and obtain a minimum cumulative score of 20 points. Scores are based on an individual's age and gender. You are encouraged to practice these tests before your evaluation. They can easily be practiced anywhere without any special equipment. Wichita Police Department applicants that have questions about the testing can contact the training center at 316-660-3810 or online at www.wichita.gov/wpd. Cedric County Sheriff applicants that have questions about the testing can contact the training center at 316-660-3800 or online at www.cedriccounty.org.
Welcome you today. Having a safe and secure community is very important to Sedgwick County. The Office of Medical Director plays a key role in providing clinical leadership and oversight for all aspects of pre-hospital patient care. This applies to all medical providers and agencies throughout the emergency medical system that we have here in Sedgwick County. Some of you may remember this building as the former Murdoch Tag Office, but through extensive remodeling, we're thrilled to have Dr. Gallagher and his team here in such a great facility today. The entire project took approximately five months to complete. Total cost for $458,550.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. John Gallagher. I'm the System Medical Director for the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County and the very excited and proud new occupant of this building. While we are extremely grateful to Chief Leake and Fire District Number One for having housed our department for so long, it is just incredible to be in a facility like this. We manage the pre-hospital protocols, the guidelines which all of the EMTs and paramedics use to provide patient care, but we also provide the testing that is required to ensure competency within our providers. Everyone who works within our system has to pass written tests on clinical knowledge as well as the protocol familiarity, and then they have to pass physical, hands-on testing to make sure that they have the necessary physical skills to perform the procedures appropriate for their level. And then, at the advanced level, our advanced EMTs and paramedics come into this simulation center to perform simulated patient encounters to make sure that they can take that mental knowledge and apply it in a real-world setting. So, this facility will dramatically improve our effectiveness.
So, all five commissioners came together to make this a reality for our Office of Medical Director today, and I want to thank all five commissioners, the other four, for help making this happen.
We are in the outdoor area of our simulation center. We have the ambulance simulator right behind me. We can bring the crews into a realistic environment and have them run calls and have it very realistic to the environment that they're in every day.
This is the control room, and so all of the information from out in the simulation center is wired back here. One of the things that's important to quality testing is that the person who's in front of the camera doesn't feel like that. They have to feel and believe like they are out in the real world delivering real patient care. And so by bringing all of that information outside, piping it to a control room, we can have the exact same outcomes, but without that person feeling like they've got a false environment. In the face of an emergency, you don't get to pick your EMT or your paramedic. So one of our jobs is to make sure that anyone who shows up at your door or at your car accident or your place of work is somebody that you would be happy choosing to provide your health care.
Sedgwick County Fire District One would like to remind citizens that during periods of high fire danger, there are precautions you can take to help minimize the risk of starting a fire. Periods of high fire danger are defined by low humidity, long periods of very little moisture, and very high winds that are usually greater than 15 miles per hour. When fire danger is high, there are numerous causes that can ignite a fire with very little fuel involved. Here are some precautions that you can take. Be aware when discarding cigarettes, cigars, or other similar products. Ensure trailer chains don't drag on the ground and spark. Properly maintain vehicles to prevent sparks or flammable materials from coming out of the exhaust system. Completely extinguish all recreational burns, such as barbecue grills, chimeneas, and fire pits, with abundant amounts of water. Use extreme caution when welding or using a blowtorch. Use spark arresters on portable gasoline-powered equipment, such as lawn mowers, weed eaters, edgers, and chainsaws. Remember, open burns will not be allowed on high-fire danger days, even with valid burn permits. Please call Sedgwick County Fire District One at 660-3473 or visit www.cedriccounty.org if you have any questions.
Well, we have 600 miles of paved roads, and so if we're on a six-year program, that means we redo 100 miles of road every year. And this one that you see today is pavement rejuvenation.
This is actually a project that's about, one of about six or seven tools in the toolbox we use in Sedgwick County to refurbish our roads.
They heat up the pavement, and they mill off or grind up the top inch, and they recycle that. That goes back down on the road. Also with that, they put an inch of virgin material on top of that.
When they get done, this road's as if it's a brand-new road. So although this road's 11 years old, and it costs $3 million a mile to fabricate this road originally, we can preserve this asset indefinitely.
Some taxpayers might think it's a waste of money. They can't see with the naked eye that these roads are, need something done. But that's what preventive maintenance is all about. There are microcracks in that pavement that lets water get down into the subbase, and with that, we have freeze and thaw cycle in Kansas, which is really bad, and that's when your potholes start.
Are we wasting money or are we saving money? Well, the answer to that, of course, is we're spending some money, but the intent, of course, is to save money over time.
You keep good roads good. The road is an asset. It is not an expendable that you throw away.
Sedgwick County does it right because we've got great staff. They have excellent skills. They have good judgment, and we invest in Sedgwick County to make sure these roads are done at the right time with the right process. And with that, this road today is a brand-new road.
Commissioner has returned from executive session. No binding action was taken. Mr. Papoon.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoon, County Counselor. I would request at this time that the Board of County Commissioners consider an off-agenda item, which would appoint Mark Clark as Sedgwick County Appraiser.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second for an off-agenda item to approve. Any other, any comments or questions? Okay, being none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Our congratulations to Mr.-
Well, to continue, Mr. Chairman, you have before you a resolution which would appoint Charles Mark Clark as a Sedgwick County Appraiser for a term ending June 30, 2021. This resolution's in proper form. The reason we have a resolution is because state statute requires, when you appoint an appraiser, that you do it by resolution. And once the Property Valuation Division gets a copy of this resolution, he will officially be certified, or as the Sedgwick County Appraiser. I will say that Mr. Clark has, is certified, has passed all of his certifications, and is fully eligible to be the Sedgwick County Appraiser. Resolution's in proper form, and I'd ask you to adopt the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Clark's in the room. We also realize that up to this point, about a week and a half ago, he wasn't qualified to fill this position, and he just took all the final tests to be able to fill this position. He is now fully qualified, and therefore, I move that we approve the resolution before us.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? There's been a motion and a second to approve a resolution appointing Mark Clark as the appraiser. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Clark. Welcome. We have any other, any other business at hand with that?